Tonight's meeting is held in a hybrid format. Public applicants and consultants are able to participate in person here at the town hall, or remotely via Zoom video conferencing, or via telephone. People may participate in a public meeting via Zoom, and there's a link on our website to do that. And so I'm going to take the roll. Diane Levitt has stepped down as a board member, and I want to thank her for her service. In her absence, Tony Straka will be a voting member tonight. Tony Gates?
Here.
Christine?
Here.
Art?
Here.
Larry?
Sorry, here.
Phyllis?
Here.
And I'm here, and Simona is not, another alternate. And so I think we're ready to begin. That brings us to item number one on the agenda. Verizon Wireless Small Cell Wireless Communication Facility. Is there anyone here for that application?
Yes, this is Allison Phillips calling from Young Summer. I'm filling in for Scott Olson this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do you have an opportunity to review our experts' most recent presentation?
Yes, we received a copy of Mr. Muso's memo dated July 10th earlier today, so we have had an opportunity to review it.
Okay, and do you have any comments about that?
No, no comments at this time. You know, I'm happy to answer any questions the board members may have, any issues raised in the memo or otherwise.
I don't have... Oh, yes, oh, yeah. Don't you swear right now?
Excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, or you want to hear from Mr. Muso about his most recent memo?
Interesting, I don't see Mr. Muso on Zoom currently. He did communicate with us today that he was going to be here.
And I spoke with him this afternoon, he'll be on.
And you spoke with him this afternoon, he will be on.
Okay. All right, in that case, I'm going to suggest that we just go on to the next one if you don't mind waiting.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Are there public comments on this one?
Well, I think, don't you think they should listen to what the new information is before they comment on it? Don't you think like that? Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Okay. In that case, there'll be a second call on item number one. That brings us to item number two, Guardian Cell Storage, 2050 Love Road. Is there someone here for that application?
Chairman Reddell, I'm the project manager of Guardian Cell Storage.
Mr. Reddell, Mr. Reddell, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I put up there a colored rendering of what we're trying to accomplish. This property is located in 20-50 Love Road.
Speak right into the microphone, please. Yeah, thanks. Yeah.
20-50 Love Road, Tannup, Kepse. It was previous, it's vacant right now. It was previously occupied by Love Oil, who had some large oil tanks on the property. And some of you may remember, before Route 44 was redone by the state of New York, there used to be a gas station along the side there. So the property was contaminated. Back in '03, we applied to the DEC to be accepted into the Brownfield Program, which is a program that permits remediation of the property under the supervision of the DEC and their standards, which would enable a developer to build on the property. There are two formats that you can pursue under the Brownfield Act. We chose the more strict remediation program, which would allow for either residential or commercial. We were accepted into that program after probably $100,000 worth of testing and remediation and removing soil. We were provided a certificate of completion by the DEC. The certificate of completion indicates that we remediated the property to its fullest extent at that time, but we're governed by what's called a site management plan. Even to this day, we still have to undergo soil testing. There's four monitoring wells on the property. And through CHAZEN Engineering and the DEC, readings are taken every year. And as time has gone by, those readings have been going down. It's now time for us where we'd like to develop the property. And our goal is to erect an approximate 71,000-square-foot self-storage building. We made an application to the planning board to the extent that a negative declaration has been issued. And that opened the door for us to apply for variances. We need a variety of variances from the board. At this time, the original application was for six variances. But after this was submitted, it occurred to Chrissy and myself that we need an additional variance because we were seeking to have a time temperature light on the side of the building. And what my hope tonight is, is to briefly describe the project, amend my application, and continue the public hearing to next month so that we can have everything proper in front of the board and look for approvals at that time. I stopped talking because it looks like Chrissy was going to say something.
I was just going to say, I mean, you can deliberate on what's in front of you now, and then, you know, just postpone that one.
Yeah, the issue we have is that it wasn't noticed with the seventh variant, so, you know, it'll have to be noticed next month.
Correct.
And we wouldn't mind burying everything over. It was just today that I had, I was away last week. I just had an opportunity today to review Mr. Welty's comment memo, and we received one from county planning. So we'd like to be able to thoroughly look at that and put together something for the board to consider in response to both of those memos.
Is this still working?
Yep.
We're seeking several variances. We're looking for a parking variance. Under the town code, there's a requirement that you have to have a certain number of parking spaces per square footage. However, we're looking for a variance to reduce the parking from 36 down to 21, looking for a variance of 15 spaces. The reason for that is historically, self-storage is not a high-impact property. During the day, at most, we may have three or four customers throughout the day. It's really, 21 spaces, in our opinion, is a little overkill. We're providing spaces at the lower end of the parking lot here, and also in front of the building. People would be able to load and unload in the back. This would be the front entrance. We're also looking for a front yard setback and a side yard setback. Looking for variances for signage, and also some wall-mounted decorative lights. This is the front of the building. And very similar to the county highway department.
I'm sorry, Frank, you need to grab your microphone because there's, the people on Zoom will hear you.
Sorry, Mike.
That's all right.
Very similar to the county highway department down there. We wanted to have some decorative lights on the side. They're downlights, they're not great illumination lights. They're really just decorative, they're for aesthetic purposes. There's, I think under the code, they can't be more than 15 feet high, but we've come up higher with the, with the brick on the front fascia. So that's why we wanted to have them higher, so that they stand out. There's also a variance as far as lighting that's concerned. We're not allowed to have more than... We're not allowed to have more than .2-foot candles exceeding the property. We comply with that, except there's some spillage on Love Road itself. We suggest that it's probably a good idea because it would be great for security and for lighting if anybody came up there in the dark hours. The rest of the site complies with the code. It's just spilling over into the cul-de-sac there. Also, we're looking to get permission to have a sign off our property. As you come into Love Road off of Burnett Boulevard, you're going through the plaza, and it's very confusing there. We thought that a sign along Love Road down here would be a good idea to direct people, not only to us, but our proposed sign would also direct people to the rail trail. Up here, we granted the county several years ago an easement through our property. People can park along Love Road and access the rail trail there. Love Road's a weird bird. It's owned by the state, but it's maintained by the town. And the county has the easement. Years ago, there were some lines delineated there for parking so that people could park along Love Road and access the rail trail. Those lines have disappeared. But I believe that the town is in the process of having the county reline Love Road so that people are not confused on where they should park along there. And lastly, we were going to look for a time and temperature light. I don't have a rendering of that with me, but it would be on... It would be on the corner of the, the corner of the building over here. Actually, right here. It would be right there. And that would require a variance too. Now, the county has made some comments about possibility of moving the building. And I'd like an opportunity to be able to talk to the county planner who submitted that because with our site management plan, we're governed on where we can put the building based upon the prior testing. There is an existing foundation on the property now. There was an old building here, I think it was the gas station. The foundation itself is still there. The building's leveled, but the foundation is still there. And our plan is to utilize that foundation and put the building there using what we've already got on site. The county was sort of proposing putting it down in the hole more. And the county was also objecting to being just 10 feet off of the Route 44, which is kind of ironic in a way because the county highway department is no more than 10 feet off of Route 44, 3 feet high. They're not down in a hole. We're going to be down in a hole, so you really aren't going to see probably the top 1 and 1/2 stories anyways. It's a hole. And I'd be happy to field any questions that any board member may have on anything that I've discussed thus far. Thank you, Simon.
The illustration that you provided, is that supposed to represent 44 and the building? No, no.
This is Route 44 here.
No, the picture.
Here?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. This would be Route 44. There is, there's an existing sidewalk and a fence along there.
Right, do you think that that attic or accurately depicts what it would look like?
I believe so, I believe so. Probably two floors that you're going to see.
Two, okay.
Yeah, about two floors may be above Route 44. And incidentally, the height of the building is code compliant. We don't need a variance for that.
And tell me this, is it going to be secure entry, or just open or closed?
It's going to be open regular hours from 8:00 to 5:00, but it will not be overnight access.
Okay.
We do that for security reasons.
I'm sorry?
We do it for security reasons.
All right. Those are the questions I have. Christine?
No questions at the moment.
Art?
Excuse me, excuse me. Two questions so far. Where is the 44 Plaza sign in regards to this? Are you going to block visual to that?
No, we're further up the hill. As you come down Brickyard Hill, our building be on the right, but you'll still be able to see the 44 Plaza sign.
Good line of sight to that, okay.
Yes.
And could you tell me the reason that you really want to put a time-temperature sign on that building?
We've done it before in other buildings. We just thought it was a nice additive to the building. I mean, it's not, not going to make or break the deal. We really do it just because it looks nice and the public enjoys it sometimes to see what the temperature and time is.
But with the congestion in that road at times, I, my feeling is that it could be a distraction to the drivers. That's my personal feeling. So you wouldn't be heartbroken if you didn't get that?
We'll take it.
So you wouldn't, that'd be okay if we didn't, if we didn't grant that?
It's not going to make or break the project, no.
Okay, thank you.
Phyllis?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Tony G?
No questions.
Tony S?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
So how much of the property will be left the way it is? Is your building going to...
Good question.
Take over the whole five? I don't, don't look like it at all.
It's a good question. The building will be here, black top for the entrance, and black top below here. This is going to remain green and trees. We also own all over on this side here too. And we have plans and proposals for the planning board to do some plantings. And right now, it's just really lousy looking. It's all brush and trees, and we want to clean it up to make it look nice. When people come up to our facility, we want them to see a nice area. And also, I think it'll also help the appearance of the rail trail too.
So is it a push to say you would try to make that property park-like?
Yeah, that's what our, yeah.
That's what your goal is?
Yes, it is, yeah. We plan to, plan to review that with the planning board, yes.
Thank you.
And why can't you move it more to the left, away from 44?
There's an existing pond over here, and this is the deep end. But this, from here over, the slope is really pretty bad. We didn't want to disturb that area whatsoever. Actually, we had to do some work with the town environmental person. And we had suggested to leave that untouched just in case there's any blending turtles or something like that.
Frank, this is Chris Levine with Lobello slash CHAZEN. I just want to share with you the civil engineer who is working on the grading utility.
Mr. Levine, excuse me. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. As Frank was just describing, when he's at elevation in the pond, we're currently grinding down on a 3:1 side slope just to tie into the buffer. By shifting it further towards the pond, we'd be approaching within the buffer area associated with the aquatic resource. So we've kind of strategically set the limits on the length of the building based upon that aquatic resource as well.
Thank you, Chris.
I have a question. I have a question. Would you consider making the, you know, shortening the building a bit to bring it, to bring it away from Route 44 a little bit?
We'd have to look at that.
Can you talk into the microphone again, please?
We did this with a certain square footage in mind. We could take a look at that, and I can get back to you.
Thank you.
The other thing is that some of the parking in the rear, Frank, maybe isn't needed, you know, maybe you don't need that much parking. So maybe the building shape could be a little, I don't know if that works, you know, from an internal standpoint. But yeah, then maybe the, I think that's, the whole notion of, you know, any small amount away, further away from Route 44, I think, would help the board probably, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Will any of the lighting on the Route 44 side be visible? Or, and I know you said it was down-looking, but...
Yep. We're going to have pole lights that shine just down. And we're, the top of the pole, of each pole light is going to be lower than the elevation of Route 44.
Okay. What about the decorative lights on the building? Are you going to have any on that side?
There would be some as you're coming down Route 44, yes. They're, they're not, they're not great wattage, and they only shine down. It's more like a nightlight, so to speak. It's very dull, just decorative.
Will you be turning the lights off at, after 11?
Yes.
All right. Anyone else?
I have one more.
Okay.
As always. Are you going to have any outside storage of boats, vans, et cetera, mobile homes?
None whatsoever, and we plan on putting a note on the map to that effect.
Okay.
We, we do not want it there.
Thank you.
Planning board has the same question. Good question.
Anyone else? All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience.
If you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself. *6 if you're on a phone. Nope, does not look like it.
And I move to adjourn this to the August meeting. August 8?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by a "aye."
Aye.
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 Any votes, then that motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's see, Mr. Muso has appeared?
Ah, yes, yep.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to go back to item number one. Invite Mr. Muso to, there we go. He was there.
Yeah, where is he? Oh, there he is, okay.
Mr. Muso, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, you want to briefly summarize your most recent memo?
Yes, Chair members of the board, thanks for having me back tonight. If you'll allow, I'd just like to screen share my memo. It would facilitate my run-through, and maybe some questions that you may have.
Go ahead.
Let me get that going. Can you see a memo on the screen, hopefully?
Sure, yep. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so this is our second memo associated with this project. The first, from April, was an inventory preliminary review of the initial application materials and a request for supplemental information to clarify what was proposed and to hit some of the points that we usually address in wireless memos. Justification in need. We wanted some additional information on RF emissions. And also some additional information on aesthetics based on the proposal, which is in the historic revitalization redevelopment district. So this memo is our second. It's written for this board, obviously, for tonight. A copy is also suggested to the planning board because I understand it will go in front of the planning board for a site plan, or it needs to, depending on the decision of the use variance. Background, project description, I included in there, which I can go through quickly. Some snippets from photos that I've taken or that the applicant has provided in their drawings. I round up for the record everything that's been filed for the application and also the responses to comments that we've had. I do note that the application was referred to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development. And I'll note, I think, here that the responses to comments, I feel, are comprehensive and our comments are addressed. I don't talk about the need for the small cell. It is a capacity or infill site to supplement Verizon's existing network on the Route 9 corridor, in the HRDD, and in that northwest portion of the town. There were some alternate sites that were considered by the applicant. So there's a, some testimony in the file about that. I talk about the radio frequency emissions. We did ask for supplemental information with regards to that. And a supplemental report that charted the actual proposed antenna system and the frequencies was provided as, as I had requested. One of the significant things in the memo are some of the aesthetic options. So this is a new structure. It's a new pole. It's not like a monopole or a cell tower that maybe you've seen, which could be anywhere from 120 to 170 feet. This is a 40-foot total height structure, including a steel metal pole. Mr. Welty, when I met him in the field in March, gave me some knowledge about the HRDD and the town's efforts with aesthetic guidance and colors and textures and characters. And the way I, you know, viewed this application in part was, you know, something's being proposed in that district, including a small cell. There's certainly, I think, some work that the applicant could agree to as far as mitigation of blending. Quick one on structural analysis. But it is acknowledged by Tectonic, a New York State PE, working on behalf of the applicant, that, you know, the structural design criteria for the pole and its foundation would, would be needed. And very last, summary of the key findings associated with those sections I just went through. And also some recommendations. These are recommendations based on if this board decides to issue a use variance and if the planning board decides to approve the site plan. So the applicant, in effect, is looking for both of those approvals. Just to show you some images in plan view. So north being up on this snippet, Route 9 would be off to the left. Winslow Gate Road, the small cell is located right here in the middle. It's a 10-foot by 10-foot, 100-square-foot compound in plan view. Off to the top right here, or to the top and then to the right is the Shoprite parking lot. And the Shoprite is further off this image here. Zooming in, this is the 10-foot by 10-foot proposed area. So this is a real big scale, as you can tell. The pole would be within the fenced compound. In fact, all the equipment is within the fenced compound. A gravel surface, except for about a 12-square-foot concrete pad to house a proposed equipment cabinet. 6-foot chain-link fencing is proposed, and that's one of those aesthetic features where I talk about later in the memo. But all the equipment is contained with inside and not visible outside of the fenced compound. So here is a cross-section image. The total height with the antenna system at the very top is 40 feet above grade. This would be a metal or steel pole, about 11-inch diameter at the base, about 6-inch diameter near the top to give you some scale of what's being proposed. And then the ground-based area, this would be, looking through the fence, you'd see equipment. And a total of five trees are proposed to supplement some existing evergreen trees that are in location now. It's what the antenna looks like if we're looking at the very top of the proposed structure. So these are some photos from my visit to the site. This would be looking south. This is effectively from the western Shoprite parking lot, looking to the south. There's a small cluster of trees. The pole would be right within that area, the 10-foot by 10-foot. This is just if you're looking from the proposed site back across Shoprite. Which actually came into play here a little bit. One of the questions I asked was, well, what about a rooftop colocation versus a new pole? So I do, I do talk about that a little bit. But the architecture on the roof is important. You know, much of the roof is flat. But there is, there are some peaks and valleys which may impede signal, depending on how a small cell would be situated on a rooftop. So I do talk about that a little bit, and the applicant answered the question, or a couple of questions for me. Recap the filings, the initial and the supplemental. I laid out... I laid out my comments in black text, and the applicant's responses and our opinion to that. Again, I think that the changes and updates that were made, for example, to the drawing set, and to photo simulations that were provided, showing what this facility would look like. Those were not included initially, but I feel that the applicant was responsive. So I talk about that in that section. The capacity and service area, there's an in-depth report by the Verizon RF engineer. I had asked them to chart out the existing Verizon sites that are on air, their height of their antennas, the distance from this proposed site. That allowed us to really kind of analyze the site area in our map resources from a plan view, and also look at topography a little bit more. The main site in question where Verizon has a problem, and a documented problem, is on the Marist College campus. So I talked about that a little bit, and then provided what are known as capacity charts for 2021 into 2022. Two of the key performance indicators for data volume and average scheduled eligible users, there are indicators about the loads and the call traffic, or data use traffic on cell sites. So these are not for the proposed site, but they're for the Marist College site located just to the south. And at the frequencies that service the area, the licensed frequencies, you can see that that dashed line is exceeded for both of those. So this is an indicator that says, hey, a new cell site is justified to offload some of the call traffic and data traffic, and to provide more capacity intensification to the network. And that's certainly a trend that we're seeing in the industry. Alternate sites, there were just a few of these that were considered. One was on the west side of Route 9, looking at this specific search area and elevation that would be needed as an infill site. Verizon would identify something. However, looking at the topography, going down a little bit towards the river, or starting to go down a little bit to the west, and also with the tree line. The area that they targeted actually ends up being in a nature preserve, the Ferntor Nature Preserve. And because of the topography, because of the tree line, they'd be looking at a significantly taller antenna height that would be needed. They looked at the smokestack structure within the HRDD. Again, that was more than 2,000 feet to the northeast of Verizon's search area. That covers, you know, the area basically between the Marist cell site, much of the Route 9 corridor, and commercial, residential, institutional, on and off that corridor. So by its location, the smokestack would not work from an RF justification, and we agree with that. There was a site just to the south of Winslow Gate Road, that little crossover into the Home Depot area. So a small cell or a structure around that area may have worked. However, it was reported by the site acquisition person from Verizon that they couldn't, the property owner wasn't interested in leasing or accommodating a small cell. Radio frequency emissions, almost at the end of this, radio frequency emissions, something that we always ask for. Initially, there was essentially a one-page letter that said we're compliant, but I wanted more information on that. So in May, we did get a supplemental report. I asked them to chart out the methods that they use in modeling. They do reference the correct FCC criteria of evaluating radio frequency emissions. They also included the frequencies proposed for this cell site. And those frequencies are in very familiar bands, which we've worked with. 1900, the old PCS band, Personal Communication System band, 2100, and the nearby Citizen band of 3550, all in megahertz. So those frequencies, which are noted in other application materials, are applied for the RF emissions analysis. And because this is a single antenna, because its purpose is really to service a particular area where there's capacity issues, it's generally low power. The effective radiated power in watts is noted, and I can tell you it's, you know, an order of magnitude less than what you'd find at a traditional macro cell site, like a monopole with nine or 12 antennas. Here we have a single antenna system on top of a pole. They looked at the ground level surrounding that area, and the site would be in compliance with the FCC maximum permissible exposure criteria for the general public. The aesthetics, I wanted just to bring you through these. I think it's just worth looking at real quick. There's a series of photo simulations, meaning what's on the screen now is an existing site photo. There's that cluster of evergreens off the Shoprite parking lot, to the south of the Shoprite parking lot. And then visual modeling puts in a pole. So again, let's try to give you a before and after. It's a little better. Another view from the Burger King area. You can see Shoprite off in the distance. To the left of the stop sign is the proposed area. You could see that by the trees. And there's a simulation of a pole from that particular perspective. Antenna system is on the top. The applicant gave an option about having full lighting, just to maybe be more congruent with the existing fixtures that you could see. A black color is what we recommend, or certainly that's something we think that the Town Board should consider. And then a little bit of a further view from Starbucks. Harder to see without zooming in. So findings and recommendations, I think, in summary, we did go through those areas that I hopefully summarized for you, and that are earlier in the report. Talked about the zoning district, talked about what Verizon is requesting of the town as far as approvals. We do feel that the facility is justified, that it will serve as an infill site. The applicant did look at alternate sites, and I believe gave rationales either technically, or just administratively, that they were able to get a lease with one of the properties that they looked at within that search ring. I also want to note here, and I think this is an important point, the frequencies that are proposed are mid-band frequencies, not unlike anything that I've worked with on these applications over, you know, the past couple decades. There is something out there in terms of the high-frequency millimeter wave 5G, and what are 2,000 megahertz, in this case, 3550 megahertz. The high-frequency millimeter wave is upwards of 30,000 megahertz, or 30 gigahertz to 100. I always like to ask that question, because we know this is an emerging aspect. We know high-frequency 5G is in urban and dense areas. It's clear that it's not being proposed here. I think you've heard that testimony in the past from the applicant's representative. But I do want to note that, because I think that is an important point. Let's see, we talked about the use variance a little bit. The RF emissions are summarized, and then very last, just some photos of the light stanchions that exist in the HRDD. So these are not the proposed site, but I wanted to just to give a feel of some of the colors and textures that are around. I do have a recommendation about color, and about an antenna cover that could be considered. This would be a black bulb, and the cover could come in black, and that might be something that the town could match. I don't think chain-link fencing really is appropriate, even with the proposed landscaping of additional evergreen trees. I know you have the design book for the HRDD, but, you know, there are some interesting textures very close by to this proposed site that could be worked into the fencing. And that's about it. There are some other standard recommendations, again, really premised on if the approvals are granted by the town. Some of those are with regards to monitoring operations, reporting, and getting the necessary permits for future modifications to the cell site, et cetera. And that's kind of the long and short of the tech memo.
All right. Any questions from the Board?
No, no questions.
All right. Does the applicant have any other comments on this? Why don't you... No, thank you. Is the applicant still there?
I don't see Allison listed anymore. I know Mike said that he was having trouble logging on. I don't know if Allison, and that's why he was late, but I don't know if Allison got booted, or...
Looks like this is me.
There she is.
She's coming.
Okay, all right, Allison's back.
Sure what happened.
All right. And do you have any additional comments about that presentation?
No, we've had a chance to review the memo. We appreciate that it's acknowledged. We responded to all the comments, provided the additional supplemental information that was necessary. With regard to the visual appearance of the fencing option, you know, we're happy to have that discussion. You know, we had thought it would, you know, probably be more appropriate for the Planning Board in reviewing the site plan, because if we're going to talk about different options for the fencing, it would probably, you know, call into question, you know, whether we need the proposed landscaping we had originally suggested with the chain-link fence. Just thought that that could be a discussion we have when the Planning Board is reviewing the site plan. But obviously, that, you know, the requirement that we review that with the Planning Board could be a condition of the ZB's approval on the variance.
All right. Anything else from the Board? Larry, did you have anything?
Larry, no.
Okay. All right, now, anyone?
And this, I guess, would be for Mike. You talked about the radio frequency being very, very low. Is there any chance that that can change, that that can increase, or that change over time? Or is it always going to be at this, what is it, 1%?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, you need to have a frequency of transmission, and you need to have a power level, right, that's needed. That gets RF into the environment that we live in, and that's what the RF emission modeling and, you know, at times, there's real field readings that are done. So cell sites, as they're built now, you know, they do breathe. You know, the middle of the night, or if nobody's on the road, that's going to be very different than during a peak time. And the network of cell sites, ones that are adjacent to one another, they are designed to interact and to react, depending on needs. So how the modeling was done, and how the FCC bulletin suggests it's done, is really during, you know, peak time and peak power capabilities. For a small cell site like this, and, you know, I do have a recommendation in there about modifications, I wouldn't expect the max-
Keep power and data.
Hello?
No, go ahead.
I wouldn't expect the maximum power level to change. And I do have a note about if there's any drastic change of frequency, i.e., moving to something very different to what has been presented to the town now, vis a vis a millimeter wave technology. There would be a review and approval that would be needed of that. And I just want to conclude on that point, too. In this tech memo, I didn't touch upon this, but I do understand that the town is taking the initiative to assemble a thorough code that would govern wireless telecommunications facilities, and I think that's an important thing, and I think that's a really, you know, a really great thing. And those types of code chapters could have things in there that would address the need for monitoring, or reporting, or recertification, and the process for doing modifications of an existing cell site. So a long-winded answer, I know, but small cells like this, you would not expect the power levels, and thus the resulting RF emissions to really fluctuate on average in the future.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, now I'll open up to any of the participants in the audience. And I'm going to ask you to limit any comments to three minutes. Anyone? Come on up.
I would have, yeah, it's Michelle.
Yes, I do swear.
Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is truly complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yep, yes. I would have liked to have had the opportunity to reread that, because as of, I think it was yesterday I went into the town hall, was it the day before? And, no, today's Monday, so it was Friday. And then, you know, of course, his additions to the tech memo were not there, and nor was some of the other information to which he referred, some supplemental report was also not there. So, you know, I couldn't review any of that, but I did hash through a lot of pages of information. It was basically what we had in there before. There was nothing new there at the town hall for the public to review. So the first thing is, this infill, the infill site thing, there's no probative evidence. I've said this before. Other towns have asked for drive tests, and what's interesting is, once they do that, telecoms pick another town to go to, or the site developers go somewhere else, because they know it's problematic. So we don't have that in our town code. As Mr. Muso said, it's good idea for us to have prescriptive code. It really is. And I know you're working on something like that, although there's no subject matter expert that I can see on the committee or in the working group that can advise the town about, you know, what they should have in it, what they shouldn't have in it, from experience protecting their own, the towns that they've been retained to protect. So if we have both Lisa and Mike Muso, who are wonderful people, saying that our hands are tied, and they've said it over and over again, do we really want those people declared as our subject matter experts to create code? It just doesn't make sense to me. I don't know, maybe I'm not, you know, I'm not a brilliant person, but that doesn't make sense to me. So, you know, there is nothing in the TCA Act, and I've mentioned this before, that preempts local authority when it comes to operations. And, yeah, placement, you know, construction, sure, but not operations, and that's where we get our power from. And I've mentioned this to Lisa and the Board before. So going back to my initial notes from what Mike said, there is no ongoing monitoring in our code for that. Yeah, he actually said power levels, frequencies, or modulation will go up and down. Well, how far up and how far down? We don't know. Certainly, driving down Route 9, I had weirdo cramping at certain portions of my ride, which, you know, I really hadn't had before. It's curious, I mean, I don't know if it's from converging signals, but we wouldn't know. And we have 146 to 1,000 feet between where this new tower is going to be placed, and residential, and businesses, and do we know anything about converging signals and the impact on biology? And Mike Muso doesn't know anything about that, nor do they, nor do, nor do people, nor are people concerned about that. They're concerned about whether your skin is going to burn and slough off. And, you know, and that's, you know, I mean, that's ludicrous. We are biological, electrical beings, and this stuff does affect us. Some more than others, some are more sensitized at this point than others.
You can wrap it up.
So that is my wrap-up for the moment. So that is my wrap-up for the moment. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to come out on this application?
There's someone on Zoom with a hand raised, Carla B. Carla, you have your hand raised. Were you intending to comment on this? If so, unmute yourself. Maybe we'll come back to Carla, I guess. Let's see, ask which one to mute.
All right. Then why don't you come up?
Oh, wait.
Hello?
All right, hang on. Have a seat.
Yes.
No, you have, go back, and we're going to let Carla.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what would you like to say?
So I recently watched a video from Dr. Barry Trower. He's a British physicist who worked for the British Royal Navy, and he worked in the British Secret Service. He spent his career learning about biological effects of microwave radiation. He considers his microwave warfare as the perfect stealth weapon. In the military, low-level microwave radiation is used in underwater bombs for purposes of having neurological effects on its enemy. It is designed to make them sick over time. A long, low dose is equivalent to a short, high dose. It is documented that during the Cold War, pulse frequencies have been used during purposes of, for purposes of planning women's fertility. Microwave pulse frequencies change circadian and cyclotronic residence in the body, causing imbalance and malfunction. It is known that women are considered electro-sensitive, and therefore more susceptible to symptoms while experiencing microwave radiation, which is synonymous with lead or cyanide poisoning. Within the next three generations, it is known and documented that one in eight children can expect to be born healthy. The uterus can absorb 20% more radiation than the rest of the body. It only takes 15 days for cells to be programmed to develop cancer. Dr. Trower has said whoever made the decision to put Wi-Fi in schools should be locked up. The incentive is not worth the genetic problems these children will face later in life, not to mention the guilt their parents will feel when they become ill and can't live a full, normal life. There are other options. It is said Israel has created 5G but won't implement it in their country. Why else would a country choose to have 5G? There's a profit of $17 trillion to be made and/or the deliberate choice to destroy a country. Our planet has been suffering the consequences of microwave radiation. It is estimated that in five generations, our forests will be extinct. If we continue to destroy trees, there will be extra carbon dioxide going into our lakes and streams. The water becomes more acidic and poisons the fish. It is a delicate balance. Also, bacteria and viruses thrive on microwaves and become resistant to all treatments, so it multiplies more quickly. Not only has countries worldwide have been clearing trees because it interrupts the Wi-Fi signal, but pollinating insects are being depleted, along with that goes 80% of our agriculture. Arson has said if we lose the bee population, we are in trouble. There is a select safety level for pulse frequency, so there are no obvious deaths or any other obvious effects that would bring attention and cannot be challenged in court. These frequencies can also be a form of mind control. Neurological changes will determine behavior and mood. It induces chemicals in the brain to portray suicide and aggression. The more readily available 5G is, the more satellites are in our atmosphere. Transmitters in hundreds of thousands monitor every piece of data. Yes, info can be bought and sold to anyone who is interested. There are at least 20 different corporations putting money into this. Imagine your medical records available at a price. How could the government implement new laws to objectify the population if they knew what you tell your doctor? This is a mindful genocide happening, and if we don't take steps to rectify this, there will be a bleak future for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Now you can come up.
Good evening. Hello?
My name is Patricia Nash-Wolffart. I live in Poughkeepsie.
Hi, Patricia. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes. Our understanding is that there's significant evidence of harm from this proposal, and there is an attack on the public and on our children. I'd like to allot my three minutes to Michelle Squires.
Okay. Everybody, I know I'm still under, you know, the whole thing. So, yeah, I've mentioned this before, SiteSafe and Qualtech are sister companies, and they're both vendors of Verizon, so we're relying on them for safety information. And yet their disclaimer talks about, well, our safety certification, or whatever it is, will rely on what the applicant tells us. So, I mean, I don't know. That also doesn't make sense to me. There was a chart in the application that charted out the MPE, you know, the maximum exposure levels. Anyway, I'm looking at it, you know, of course, there's a controlled exposure, and then there's the uncontrolled exposure. I know in ShopRite area, it's going to be the uncontrolled exposure. It says 30 minutes. I don't know what happens after you have a longer conversation with your, you know, the person you're shopping with, and you decide to talk about, you know, the new shoes that you got the week before. What happens after that? I mean, the chart only says 30-minute exposure. I mean, I don't know. That's also something, doesn't make sense to me. Bruce, over in the town hall, I asked him, well, what about fire and electrical inspection of these things? I mean, these things are known to catch fire. Hopefully, we're going to be really firm about the fire and electrical inspection. And of course, the more we impose on that, you know, the less likely Verizon's going to want to continue to, or the site developers are going to want to continue to do this, because it makes it more expensive. I already spoke about the SME, and Mr. Muso is great with fencing landscaping, flags, and paint. I mean, he really is, but I think we need to dig in a bit more than that. My question is, what will happen when our towns impose this technology upon the residents without informed consent? So again, you know, tries, a town may try to create one. Town of Poughkeepsie is not playing on a level, playing field with big telecom. Telecom industry has immunity from liability. The town and its numerous officials, both elected and appointed, actually do not have blanket immunity, contrary to what Mr. Nelson might have you believe. What you are participating in will not be tolerated, this overproliferation. We need to justify need and have probative evidence that we do actually need it before we start putting up more towers all over the place. So your surety bond or blanket umbrella insurance coverage will not protect you from personal liability or from accountability under color of law or domestic violence. Ask Jim Nelson, you might feel a twinge of shame asking the question, but as presumed ethical public servants, we expect you will fill that twinge. We urge you to do the right thing.
All right, anyone else?
What's your name?
Lori Maline.
Lori, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Okay, hello?
What would you like to say?
I would like to say, so I'm kind of new to this whole electromagnetic radiation arena, but I am a biologist and a school teacher for the last 30-some years, and I have been doing some research. And what I found, I noticed the gentleman who was telling us all that stuff said something about the FCC guidelines, and that they're under the minimum or maximum, whatever. Well, let me tell you what happens within those FCC guidelines. Brain tumors, breast cancer, leukemia, gland tumors, DNA damage, DNA repair inhibition, neurogenitive diseases like Alzheimer's, autism, reproductive problems, unfavorable pregnancy outcomes, oxidative stress, inflammation, brain, or blood-brain barrier disruption, which is seriously serious. Sleep disturbance, headache, which I have right now since I came on this property, irritability, fatigue, concentration difficulties, which I can vouch for, especially in children, since I work in a city full of, you know, Wi-Fi. Depression, dizziness, tinnitus, burning and flushed skin, digestive disturbance, cardiac irregularities, adverse impacts on the nervous, circulatory, immune, endocrine, and skeletal systems. So I know that we have in the works a telecom code update. I hope that we're putting some serious work into that, and I think that there should be probably no new towers of any kind in the area until that code is updated, and we have had some true experts guide us on what kind of limits we need to have in the area. It's already very hard to live here, and this is not a city, well, I guess Poughkeepsie's kind of a city, but this area is very difficult to live in, to shop in, if you have any kind of disturbance caused by electromagnetic radiation, which many of us do. Because almost all of the studies that I could find note that the radiation is harmful to living things. And last time I checked, we're all living things. Thanks.
All right, anyone else?
Nicholas Cachinos.
Nicholas, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Last month, Mr. Olson made a point to downplay the severity of these networks, saying we do not understand the proper definition, as it is just the newest version of cell technology. This technology is not new. The spectrum has been in use for over 50 years, with patents for it going back just as long. These frequencies are still in use all over the world today as active denial systems used in riot crowd control and dispersal. Verizon also states that the tower at 10-50 Winslow Gate Road will not be 5G, yet the 3750 megahertz is in fact part of the 5G spectrum, as is the 3550 megahertz tower proposed for Amit Avenue. Yet Verizon continues to deny this fact. Are we really to believe that Verizon is shelling out money to run fiber optics, build housing for the cables, put up a 40-foot tower disguised as a streetlight, only to run 4G, which they themselves are working to phase out, just as they're doing to their 3G network at the end of this year? Unless there is something in writing saying that this tower will only be 4G, I can guarantee you that it will be updated for 5G sooner rather than later. Verizon also said there are no health effects associated with 4G or any of these towers. This is an outright false statement. There are thousands of independent studies that have proven the ill effects caused by 3, 4, and 5G networks. The same exact tower being proposed for Winslow Gate Road, the 40-foot tower with a single cylinder on top, was placed at an elementary school in Ripon, California, five years ago, operating only on a 4G. In a short time, four children ages 10 and under were diagnosed with brain cancer, brain cancer, brain cancer, and kidney cancer. When parents took Sprint to court over the tower, the lawyers, experts, and everyone else all parroted the same FCC compliance. And in 2019, Sprint won the case, but yet at great cost to themselves, they still took down and relocated their tower. Why is that? I'll tell you why. It's because they only knew it would be a matter of time before more children got sick and they'd be back in court. When the town moves its facilities to Poughkeepsie Day School, you will all be exposed to levels of EMF radiation thousands of times higher than the recommended max of 5 microwatts per square meter in outdoor spaces. Two signs at Poughkeepsie Day School even placed on the tower, which is a joke, read RF fields near some antennas may exceed FCC rules for human exposure. This is going to be where you're moving in your backyard. If a code or ordinances for these towers, antennas are not in place, town employees and staff will be moving out of the frying pan and directly into the fire. I also have some data and my testimony from last month. I made copies for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara.
Barbara, do you swear or-
Barbara Helm. Yes, I do swear, so help me God to tell the truth.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
To help me God, yes. Okay.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
What I would like to say is that I have the Environmental Health Trust. I was looking at that today, and it has 400 scientists and thousands of medical doctors are affirming that in their testings, that this is not healthy for human beings or animals. The FCC never qualified and checked who is healthy for and who it wasn't healthy for. They just, let me just go back here, too. Distinguished U.S. government scientific directors documented a serious risk from current levels of wireless exposure. The, in 2020, Environment Health Trust filed a historic legal action against FCC, calling on the FCC to fully review their records and update its 25-year-old wireless radiation exposure guidelines for radio frequency radiation, RFR, from cell phones, cell towers, Wi-Fi, 5G, and other wireless communication devices. So they, there is a lawsuit right now versus Environmental Health Trust and FCC. And it's being featured in Washington, D.C. Top News Bloomberg Law. Also, it was quite interesting, this article, that it said, "Many European countries have stronger limits based on their framework and precautions." Countries in, such as India, China, Russia, have made much lower limits than the ICNR, NIRP, and they are scientifically based. So to me, the question is, they're putting this up, but they aren't saying what's healthy for you, and what's healthy for us, and what's going to happen. Then I just found something out today in this Veritas magazine. The graphene, the shot that we got, has in it aluminum bromine. And Dr. France's Pfizer vaccine was made up of aluminum, carbon, and bromine. It turns out that the combination of aluminum and bromine forms perfect, is a perfect explosive. That's the graphene that's in the vax, and it works well with 5G. Just saying. It works well with 5G. The aluminum, the graphene, and the bromine forms a perfect explosion. You know what? Your decision. I think, I would assume, I would request that this proposal be put on the back burner until everything is updated, and until it is proven that it is safe for human beings. And that includes you, and me, and our children. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Carlo Mesrilli.
Carlo, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. I just want to make a couple of brief statements. I know you guys are aware that in 2021, the FCC lost the lawsuit regarding EMF radiation. Just by showing hands, anyone take the time to kind of look at that lawsuit? I know we're all busy. I'm just curious.
No, we've all read the decision. It doesn't indicate what I think that you think it means, but go ahead.
Okay. So here's another thing. If we haven't learned anything this year, the last couple of years, big industry is not to be trusted. That's my opinion, and it's really evident in the last couple of years that people put profit over health. I want you guys to do your due diligence. The young gentleman there, Mr. Muso, even talked about some things. He talked about very different, all these terms, and it seems like they're not defined, right? So those things need to be defined, need to be addressed, need to be looked at. And we need experts, and I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Michelle Squires. Thank you.
All right, everybody, the, you know, we have 185-11, Terms and Conditions of Franchisees or Licenses: Surety Bonding. It says, "The town reserves the right to stop any work related to the telecommunications system until proper evidence of bonding is furnished." Proper insurance will not be, if, proper insurance will not be provided by any carrier, as I have mentioned, due to the Insurance Industry's Clause, Chapter 32, Pollution Exclusion Standard. Yet the town of Poughkeepsie shows no interest in following its own code concerning adequate coverage. This will be used as a method to point to the town's accountability.
any extension or renewal thereof, and to adjust insurance coverages and limits when deemed necessary and prudent by the town attorney, based upon changes in statutory laws," and I know Lisa said there's no change in statutory laws, "court decisions," there was a court decision, it was an incredible ruling there, "or the claimed history of the industry, or the franchisee." Okay? So, you know, we can't neglect to exercise our own code at our own peril.
If you could wrap it up.
Yep. Sounds like town negligence to me if we don't ask for this kind of coverage without pollution exclusions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. I don't see anyone in the audience or I don't see anyone on Zoom. I'm just trying to raise their hand or unmute, so I think we're okay. All right. Does either the applicant or Mr. Musso want to comment on any of these, these comments?
Well, if I may, Chairman, just to note that I believe that these, the court case was discussed at the, at the prior board meeting, and, and I think the board is aware through the discussion from its legal counsel that, you know, the, the court did not weigh in on, you know, any, any alleged harmful effects of RF emissions at, at permitted levels. And the information in the record does demonstrate that we are well within, below those levels that have been established to protect human health and the environment. That's all been documented for the record and confirmed by the board's consultant, Mr. Musso. We note that the board is, I'm sorry, the town is in the process of, of looking at and possibly updating its regulations with regard to telecommunications facilities. And in the future, if there are any, you know, modifications to this facility that would trigger a review under the town's then-current laws, we'll obviously be required to comply with them at that time. You know, right now, we propose that the use variance application does comply with applicable standards, and the evidence in the record demonstrates, you know, that we meet those standards. So I just, again, respectfully direct the board's attention to the information that's been provided and already submitted to the record.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Musso, did you want to comment on anything?
I have nothing further. If there's anything that's submitted in writing from tonight, I believe Nicholas left something off. I'd be interested in getting a copy.
All right. Very good. In that case, I think I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. All right. So that brings us to, all the way to item number three. 30 Nassau Road. All right. Why don't you describe your application?
What's your name?
I'm Tom, the owner of the house. The project is, the application is...
All right.
I just have to swear you in.
Got to swear you in, and you need to speak into the microphones, too. Please.
Does this work?
That one's perfect, and you can use the other one if you want it.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
All right. Why don't you describe the application?
The application is for a accessory apartment. This project is located at 30 Nassau Road. This is the existing Ray's Ranch House in the driveway. The apartment would be on the back of the house. It would be 600 square feet. This area indicates a rear porch, a covered porch facing the, the rear yard, and this area indicates the common area that makes the connection to the existing house. The proposed occupant would be Jeanette's mom. On your other, upper part of the drawing shows the existing survey of the property, location map, another location map, and then the chart shows that the setbacks are all in compliance currently and will be in compliance with all the setbacks. On the other pages of your package are the construction drawings of the project showing the size and shape of the apartment, 600 square feet, shows the rear porch, covered rear porch facing the back, shows the common area connected to the house, construction details, and the last page shows the exterior view of the, of the accessory apartment. It's a one-story structure, slab-on-grade construction, has a sliding patio door facing the rear yard underneath the covered porch, and other, the rest of it is just normal construction. The construction drawings were submitted to the building inspector with an application simultaneously when this project was submitted to this board for the request for the special use permit.
Okay. Dan, I think you mentioned, you're still going to remain living there?
Excuse me?
You're going to, you're going to live there, right?
Yes. It's owner-occupied.
And you're on town, water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay. Those are the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
Hart?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Tony S?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
All right. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right. I don't see anyone in the audience. I don't see anyone on Zoom. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. And you can either wait for the end of tonight, or you can find out tomorrow from the zoning administrator.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to item number four. 29 Wilti Road.
Hi.
Hi.
Amy Vamadiri, thanks to close it.
Amy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right. So why don't you describe this application?
So Wilti is, it's a, it's a five-lot subdivision. Actually, the explanation in the agenda was a little off. There's not a lot line realignment.
Blame the attorney.
Sorry.
That's okay. I put lot line revision. It's actually a five-lot subdivision that was approved by the planning board.
So we have conditional final approval based on this and then sewer tendency, right? And the variance we're seeking is for a side lot setback to a barn that's existing, and then a number of agricultural variances for, she, Celeste keeps animals on site and rehabs them. She's the owner of Hudson Valley Animal Rescue, and so sometimes there will be any kind of animal, any, you know, from a skunk.
Not bears, she says.
Not bears. Could be, I think she's got owls right now. So they could be in the, the barn for any given number of days until she either rehomes them or rehabs them.
All right. And this has been, I mean, there's nothing, this has been going on for quite some time, right?
Yes. Yeah. So the agricultural variances, I actually, it's, we don't have a large enough, it's going to be on Lot 19.
Right.
And that's going to be under five acres when the subdivision is completed.
Okay. There are other parts of lots that have animals that are, correct?
They're only, animals will only be on Lot 19, and then the animal rescue is a separate issue.
Okay. All right. Then those are the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Tony S?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
All right. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience. I don't see anyone on Zoom. Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All right. Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to, thank you very much. That brings us to item number five.
This is actually not a client. This is just a friend of mine. So he, I didn't see any of this when he submitted. I had nothing to do with it, but he's in Italy right now, so I told him I'd cover it for him.
Okay. So there's an affidavit being filed, allowing that, okay. Go ahead.
So from what I can see, I think these are all pre-existing nonconformities, and the addition is not making it any less nonconforming than it is now. But he plans to put the addition on the rear of the house. It's going to be two-bedroom, just a two-bedroom addition.
So the, the drawing of the two bedrooms?
So it's 150 from the backyard, but the garage is also, the garage is more nonconforming on the side yard.
All right. So they, so they enter into a common hallway and then go, and then go into the existing house? Is that the...
I guess. I, actually, I don't, I don't know what the configuration is inside. But he does, he rents to students, so that's probably how it is. I don't know if he rents the entire house to one group of people or individual.
You may not know the answer to this, but the driveway, Christine, is, is about the whole width of the property? Is that a problem?
I would have to...
There is a garage there, but it extends well past the garage.
Okay. I would have to look at the history of that to see if it was extended, how it was...
Chrissy, can you grab your mic so we can hear you?
I would have to look into that to, to see when it was extended, and I didn't do any research on that.
Okay. I'm sorry.
So, yeah, no, I could definitely take a look at that, though.
Okay. That doesn't, I mean, that's not for tonight, anyway.
I think all the structures were built in 1920.
I think that's what the, what it says, but...
The addition goes into the parking area, right?
Correct.
So it shrinks the parking area. Do we know how many parking spaces there are?
Well, the garage is easily two small cars, or two cars that aren't very tall, and, and the parking lot, you could probably fit, you might be able to fit another couple of cars there, but, I mean, you could, if you're not going to move any of them, you can fit a lot of cars there, but if anybody wants to get out, they're going to have to move all the cars to get out.
Curious, how many bedrooms is the home currently? Do we know that?
That I don't know.
What was your question?
How many bedrooms is the home currently?
It lists as a three-bedroom. I don't know if that's accurate.
Oh, okay. Okay. So five, I mean.
Yeah.
Five unrelated people.
If that's accurate about the three bedrooms. Would the building do an inspection of the?
Yep.
They would look at the whole house? Okay. All right. Then those are all the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
This is mainly, I think, for our young lady down there. Do the closets have to be in the bedroom? Because the closets are removed from the bedroom in the drawings. And I thought by code they had to be part of the bedroom structure.
Building code? I would have to look into that as well.
Can we find that out?
Yep. Is this, is a, has a building permit already been applied for for this?
I don't think so.
No? Okay. Okay. Well, if that's the case, I mean, you know, they would have to change it.
So just for clarification, would he need variances for the existing nonconformities?
So what he's applying for now is the side yard setbacks, and he's, it would be a variance for the, the setbacks. So the, I don't, the garage is not changing, so I don't, I think there was a determination that the garage doesn't require a vari, if you were to add to the nonconformity for the garage or change it in some way, go up or go out.
Yep.
Then the garage would need a variance, but it doesn't. So right now, we're here just for the variance for the addition. Yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Hart?
No, just the driveway width and the closets.
I'm, I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Driveway width and the closets was same by, same as yours.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony G?
Don't touch the driveway.
Tony S?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anything in the audience. I don't see anyone on Zoom. So I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are we going to vote on this tonight? Are we going to adjourn?
Because of...
Can we vote on it tonight if we don't have the answers for the driveway?
Well, the driveway is something different. If she needs a variant, I mean, if they need a variance, that's, Chris decided, and the, the variance is simply for an addition. If it doesn't meet the code for anything else, that's, that's something else. So all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number six, for which I have to recuse myself, and I'm going to ask Christine to take over.
Okay. This is for 16 Meadow Road.
Dan Arca?
Mr. Arca, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Tell us about your application, please.
So I am here seeking approval for two items, one being an accessory apartment and the other being a variance to build a pergola. The accessory apartment, little backstory, my fiancee and I bought the house last year, which had a previously constructed apartment, so downstairs, it's a two-bedroom, one bath, and upstairs, it is a one-bedroom, one bath. So when we purchased the house, we needed to clear out some open permits from the previous owner, which included a deck. Before that, we dug up a footing and rebuilt the stairs, and at that time, Tim had came to inspect it. All looked good. The upstairs apartment was not documented, so I asked him how to approach that. He said, because there's no entrance between the two, that they're separate, obviously, that I would need to come here and, and then go for the building permit after that. The second item is a pergola we're looking to construct that is approximately six feet off of the property line. The current requirement is 10 feet, so we're looking for a variance of four feet.
And are you, you're going to be living in the accessory apartment?
Correct.
And the pergola, it's kind of a narrow lot, so that's more or less where you have to place it.
Correct. The, the detached garage is in the middle of the yard, then we also have a property fence, so it would be, the optimal location for the pergola is, is set three feet off of the property fence that we put in, and then not visible from the road there.
Thank you. That's all we have. Hart?
No. I think the questions were all answered when we were at the property.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Tony?
No questions.
Tony S?
Actually, I do have a question. I was looking at the second floor plan on the items that were submitted, and I, I mean, I also was out there and I looked at this. I saw the entrance from the rear, but just looking at the plan, it looks like there's a, there's a door on either, on either end of this thing. If you look at your, your drawing, it says in-swinging entry door, and, and on the bottom of it, it also says, it shows an in-swinging door. I mean, it looks like it's got a door on each end. So I don't know if, if this is inaccurate, the way it's portrayed here, or what.
It could be. I currently don't have it in front of me, but my guess is that the, the one that is on the deck is the entry door, and then the egress window is on the other end of the house. And then I think what you may be viewing is a closet.
The current requirement is 10 feet, so we're looking for a variance of four feet.
And are you, you're gonna be living in the accessory apartment?
Correct.
And the pergola, it's kind of a narrow lot, so that's more or less where you have to place it.
Correct. The, um, the detached garage is in the middle of the yard. Then we also have a property fence, so it'd be, um, the oper-, the optimal location for the pergola is, is set three feet off of the pro-, uh, private property fence that we put in, and then, um, not visible from the road there.
Thank you. That's all I have. Art?
No, I think the questions were all answered when we were at the property.
Phyllis?
I have no questions. Thank you. Tony?
No questions.
Tony S.?
Uh, actually, I do have a question. I was looking at the second floor plan on the items that were submitted. And I, I mean, I also was out there and I looked at this. I saw the entrance from the rear, but just looking at the plan, it looks like there's a, there's a door on either, on either end of this thing. If you look at your, your drawing, there's, it says in-swinging entry door, and it, and, and on the bottom of it, it also says, uh, it shows, uh, an in-swinging door. I mean, it looks like it's got a door on each end. So I don't know if, if this is inaccurate, the way it's portrayed here, or, or what.
Uh, it could be. I, I currently don't have it in front of me, but my guess is that the, um, the one that is on the deck is the entry door, and then the egress window is on the other end of the house. And then I think what you may be viewing is a closet.
Well, okay, it just, it, it's, uh, it's just that it says, and I'm assuming that, that, that that's facing the street, but I don't really know. But what it says is in-swinging entry door, uh, three foot, three feet wide and 80 inches tall.
Oh, yes, that is the entrance door from the deck, from the rear of the home.
Okay. So the one at the top is, is the entrance from the, from the rear of the home, okay. And the other one, you're saying, could be a closet, right? The one on the bottom of the... May, you, you just wanna look at...
Yes, I'll take a look.
You just wanna look at this.
Yes, that is a closet.
Okay. Alright, so that's, that was the only confusion I had. And you cleared it up. Thanks.
Okay, um, Larry, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Did want to point out that there's actually two, or you're just gonna do that, too? Okay. There's actually two variances here, right? So there's, the accessory apartment is a special use permit. But as part of the, before you can issue that special use permit, that one of the requirements, uh, is that accessory apartment can't be more than 35% of the floor area of the, of the building. This apartment, which already exists from, well, all intents and purposes, but is just slightly above that 35%, it's actually 50 square feet additional. So, the way we, Lisa and I spoke about this, we, we would need to issue the variance for that additional percentage. Then you could issue the special use permit. Does that make sense?
Yes, so, so...
When we get to the voting,
Okay.
that's what we would have to be voting on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, is there anyone in the audience who, who would like to, to address this application? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, if there are no further questions, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So that passes 6-0, because all the...
Okay.
Alright, and that brings us to item number seven, One Ten O'Rocker Road. And I'll, I need to recuse myself on this one. So Christine, would you like...
Good evening.
Hi. Your name?
Uh, my name is Matthew Costa.
Mr. Costa, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Tell us about your application.
Uh, I'm coming here tonight, uh, looking for a variance to put a pool in what we consider to be our backyard. Though, because we are on a corner lot of Overrocker and Ireland Drive, we have two front yards. The area that the pool is going into is a secluded area. 50 feet setback from Ireland Drive with a elevation change between it of about five feet, as well as brush that basically obscures where the pool will be. I didn't submit at the time, but I do have a couple pictures of the site from both where the pool would be facing out towards Ireland, as well as from Ireland, looking at what you would see. There are no good other places on my property in order to put this pool. As well, the site we're looking to put it on was previously used for an above-ground pool, which was not permitted, I believe, by a prior owner. So for site prep, it's basically ready to go, and it seems not intelligent to try and do it somewhere else, quite honestly.
And, and all of that, um, all of the trees and things, they're gonna stay there?
Oh, absolutely. No, we, we value our privacy on that side. And we have no intention of cutting it down whatsoever.
It did look secluded when we were there, so...
It is.
That's all I have. Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony S.?
Uh, no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Okay, is there anybody in the app, in the audience who would like to address this application? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, well, if there are no questions, is there most, is there a motion to close a public hearing?
So...
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we'll recuse, which I did not say the last time. Okay. Thank you.
Alright, that brings us to item number eight, uh, 20, 237, 381 Salt Point Turnpike.
Uh, good evening, this is Christopher B. with the LaBella Associates, with the applicant. If I may show my screen.
Christopher, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Go ahead, put your... Well, Frank's over here.
I'm sorry?
Uh, go ahead. Why don't you describe your application?
Thank you. Um, the applicant, Herbert Riddle LLC, is seeking an area variance for lot 269 of Jupiter Lane, of the Phase Four development of the Gables, uh, which is located at 237, 381 Salt Point Turnpike. Uh, the Gables received its final site plan approval for Phase Four in 1999, and has received subsequent, uh, approvals, uh, in terms of their remitted site plans since then, uh, covering some site plan extensions and a number of area variances. Over the course of the, uh, development of the approvals, there always been a required development setback, not only for Phase Four, but for Phases One through Three of 30 feet. What we discovered, uh, when, and after the construction of Lot 269, is that the, uh, development setback that was established for this particular lot was 27 feet, uh, and not 30 feet, as, uh, continues throughout the remainder of Phases One through, uh, Four. That being said, uh, the residence as constructed, Lot 269, is encroaching within a 30-foot, uh, side development setback of 2.7 feet, or more or less than 10%. Uh, as a result, we're seeking a variance, uh, for the, uh, slight, uh, development setback. The residential structure itself meets all the setbacks to the adjoining residences within the development, and is approximately 127 feet from the closest residential structure located off-site, uh, with some, uh, vegetation between the two properties. It, it's important to also note here, uh, that the typical side yard setbacks in this, uh, in this project area are 10 feet. But this particular location here doesn't butt neighboring property, and the site development setback is 30 feet. This has been an oversight that may have occurred back in 1998, and, uh, has never been realized until this point in time, when the actual as-built of the property was, uh, developed. It is only for this lot that's, that had this inadequate, uh, developmental setback, and the remainder of all the properties are within the 30-foot developmental setback. The reality is, uh, is this self-proliferated, I guess you could say a little, uh, because this was an oversight that occurred back in 1998, neither, uh, the former choosing companies or the town's consultants, uh, and planning staff at the time had, uh, discovered, uh, at this particular location. But we believe, because of the setback from the neighboring residence of about 100 and, uh, as I said, 27 feet, we think it's negligible in terms of, uh, how it relates to the overall character of the particular Gables Home Communities.
Um, okay.
Christopher, don't mind here. It's Mr. Chairman Frank Riddle, project manager for Herbert Riddle LLC, but I defer to Mr. Lepine on this.
Okay. You don't think if you put paint instead of siding, you'd get a little farther away from the lot line? That'd be helpful? Okay. Alright, and any questions? Christine?
No questions.
Art?
You don't wanna make them move it, do you?
There's a hill right there, too, right? Sorry, no.
Oh, there is. No questions. Good. Thank you.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Alright. Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
Uh, no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Alright, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? Yes, come on up. What, well, actually, is it, are you three different people, or are you all together?
We are together, but you can go over.
Alright, don't fight.
Frank, if you want, you can sit over.
Hello.
Hi, would you state your name?
Nancy Forrest.
Kyle Forrest. Do you, do you each swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, what do you wanna say?
Well, at first, I'd like to start out by saying, for the record, this is no means an attack in any way, shape, or form against rental properties. I've worked with them in a different capacity for 40 years, but this is just an issue that needs to be dealt with. In 2019, when, um...
2018.
2018, well, when bought the, when the property was purchased, we met with the then-project manager on-site before the kids bought the property, and, um, looked at the approved site plans and what was going on. Obviously, we knew that it was going there, but wanted to know what was going on. We were given a different setback, but that's besides the point. But we...
I'm sorry, interrupt. Which property is yours?
My daughter's.
So I'm, I'm 241...
Yes, we're here.
Okay.
So that house that's set almost three feet is right against, like, my fence.
Okay.
So that's...
So just, just for the birds, uh, so you can just see where their house is, there's their house here. And here's where our lot is.
Is that about right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we had, we had asked, you know, we had asked certain questions, um, at that point. And in, in addition to the setbacks was also the, um, the property level was to be the same as my daughter's property. There was no raising of the property. That's what was on the plan. So it was, well, that's fine, because she has a privacy fence. It's not going to be right up there. So I know that two foot, seven inches doesn't seem a lot, like, a lot, but it's something that happened. What I don't understand is when you lay a house, when you put the forms down to lay a slab, especially if it's one on the outside of your whole development, when you think you'd measure it, then you do the, um, you do the slab, and then that gets inspected, and apparently, no one thought of it, or if whoever did it possibly knew it and didn't do anything about it. We, I had actually reached out to Kelly Hardisty, since I did have a working relationship, to try to figure some things going out that are way beyond this setback with the property that is happening. And, um, Frank did come out, the silt fence that was down more months than it was up, we have dated photos, Frank did come out. They put the silt fence back up. It didn't last very long, um, and it came back down. But then we did email out to have a couple of, some other questions answered, and, um, didn't get anything back, which is why my daughter's first call to the town was in 2019, because everything was being stalled out when it was starting, when it was starting. That level in the back of the house, you know, is one thing. The setback, I mean, I know that you have, you know, you have general legislation for alteration of lot line procedures and things like that, which requires all the property, you know, budding property owners to, to approve and whatever. And then, you know, the standards for the consideration include the excavation and the filling and grading, you know, that prevent erosion and sediment entering neighboring properties, which is a huge issue right now. We're kind of wading our way through it with the town and with Andy Learn, but, uh, the thing is, now we have mosquito haven there in front from, from all of that, and there's just, there's a nu-, there are a number of things that need to be done. I don't know if you've been to the site?
Yeah, yeah, we all visited the site.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
Well, in regards simply to the setback,
Right.
what would, what would satisfy you, or what, what is your biggest concern about that? Proximity to your property, the...
Well, there's a few issues. So a lot of it's privacy. When I bought my house, I actually didn't really know that this project was going on, till the day I closed. And they were, you know, knocking down the trees. I bought the house with the mind of having the privacy. I had one neighbor in All Woods, six-foot privacy fence. So it's not just a matter of the two and a half feet, but their elevation, I'm in a flood zone. They wrote, their elevation's 14 feet above mine. So that's a whole nother issue of flooding, right? But the other, the problem is that house behind me now, too, all the houses are set well above my property fence, and just overlooking into my property. So the whole privacy issue is a big thing. They're supposed to be putting in a tree line, which has not been done yet. So that's another issue. I have a privacy fence. There's not a whole lot of room for a tree line. So I'm, I just have a lot of concerns, and now that's all built up back there, too, and that's starting to flood back into my fence. So I just, I feel like with this project, they just get away with everything, and it just doesn't feel right to me, and my value of my property is going, you know? So I have, like, a lot of issues. I'm not entirely sure what we can do. They already did it. They already said all the other houses going that distance.
Jupiter Lane as well, which, that property that's, uh, not meeting the setback, um, on the end of that, that, that road actually goes down, and that's on the back corner of her property. And we did notice that there are, there are, um, storm drains on one side of the road, but not on the other. So, again, you know, it's built up so high, a lot of, um, a lot of severe weather's gonna pull that right down into the back corner.
Okay, but, uh...
I get what you're saying, Zulai.
I, I need to just focus on the setback issue.
Mm-hmm.
I understand that you have a lot of other things going on.
Yeah, right, we know that, yeah.
I wanna see how the setback issue affects you. It's just the privacy part of it?
Mainly the privacy, and, you know, I, how does that work with raising the elevation, too? Because is that something they have to get a variance from, from, like, the plan? If the plan's showing it's gonna be three feet, and then they put it up at 14?
We, we, if I may, uh, answer this question, uh, Mr. Chairman, it, it may be of assistance. When the Gables Home Community was approved, it was approved contingent upon, uh, getting a flood development permit to raise the section of the dwellings above the flood plain, as the, uh, the individual had commented on that their property is in a flood plain. Uh, sections of this property, too, were in a flood plain as well. And, uh, we worked with FEMA and the Town of Poughkeepsie over a number of years to get a flood plain development permit, which required the fill to be placed so that the dwellings are above the 100-year flood plain.
Yeah, they had put, uh, when they first started it and brought the fill in, we actually saw photos of equipment that was sinking right into it, and it just kept more and more being brought in, and up higher and up higher. The problem with that, where, where she has an issue with the flooding on hers now was not there before, and the neighbor that lives next door, who's been there for 16 years, has never had it. We talked to the people she bought the house from, and then there's the people before that. It's directly, like we said, I know we're here just for the setback, but that raising of it is bringing all the water in. That, I mean, that's, that's a concern. What will satisfy, I don't know. What kind of compensation does it? I mean, it's, it's there, the house is done. I don't know what the county responded. What did they have to say?
Well...
Yeah, I, 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 as I said, I, I just wanna make this really clear for the record. This was not done intentionally. There was a plan that was developed in 1998, and I'm, I'm being completely transparent here. For the entire circumference, uh, Phase One through Four, there was a 30-foot setback line developed. I don't know why. I, I, unfortunately, I was not a employee at the time of this occurrence. I did come in late, in 1998. But this particular lot here, uh, for some unknown reason, 27 feet was established as opposed to 30 feet. It, once again, there was no intentions taken with regards to how this was setback. This was, this was just an oversight that wasn't discovered until the as-built was prepared that identified that this was within, uh, within the setback. If, if we would have known that prior, and we were staking out the building on the, uh, when we stake out the floor corners, over which can actually place the building within the building envelope that's also approved, we would have identified it. It just, it was not known. It was approved once again in 1998, and we went ahead and we did the stakeout associated with it from the 1998 approval. With regards to Jupiter Lane, the drainage along there, there are catch bases that take the drainage and convey it to the, uh, western, uh, store owner management base. It then discharges out to the wetland that goes along... It then just charges out to the wetland that goes along to St. Peter's Cemetery line. With regards to the drainage concerns that you are bringing up, we have responded to each request from the town of Poughkeepsie. We were asked to go onto your property and perform some additional survey, which we did. We were then asked to map that with the as-built mapping of our site, which we did. We got a, we provided that information to the town consultants. They gave us a response letter. We had a phone call a week ago. We have developed an action plan for addressing some of the items that they had asked us to do. One being to stake out the property line adjacent to your property. We've been asked to reevaluate the store owner detention basin in the eastern portion of our property. And as the fact that since we moved this project along at a little bit more rapid pace during the course of twenty twenty-two, the town has asked us, can we finalize the actual detention basin in that eastern corner? We are in the process of surveying that so that work can be done. We are also in the process of, there's some other additional maintenance items that the town has suggested to us that they think may help, and we've offered to do that as well. And once again, for the record, you know, I do want to acknowledge that we did shoot some elevations along your property. I know this isn't relevant to the setback, but just for everybody's perspective, we have a flood plain elevation here of one eighty-four, and there, or one eighty-four point eight, I'm sorry. And we did encounter some locations on their site where elevations were one seventy-five. And that's not a result of our construction, either just here's the flood plain in the area, and here are some of the elevations that we shot on your property. So, my understanding, there is another follow-up meeting next week that we were asked to attend, and we'll be very responsive to everything as it relates to our property. And we're going to continue to be responsive to whatever concerns are related to the items that we constructed on our property, and we will improve if there are any oversights with those, and to help some of the issues on your property. I can't, I can't tell you what your previous status was, obviously, I didn't live there, but since I have been involved in this project, the drainage from our site, at least the portions that are parallel to Salt Point Turnpike, have always flowed from the west, I'm sorry, to the east to the west, along Salt Point, toward your property, and then they eventually make its way towards the wetlands that go along St. Peter Cemetery. And that entire wetland area through St. Peter Cemetery up through your property, if everybody goes to visit, partial access, is all confined within the one hundred year flood plain.
All right, does that help?
Kind of gives you an overview of-
I do have two other questions though. So when you set the houses on your property, you don't do a survey for each one when you're staking it out, your four corners?
We do, if I could just clarify for that. So when they stake out the homes, they stake out the approved lot envelope. And let me go to, let me try to bring up a plan here. Okay, so here's a lot envelope right here. Do you see this lot envelope for two sixty-nine? That I'm showing? Here are four corners, one here, 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 and here.
Can you do a different color, can you do a different color or a larger cursor, because I can't see that?
Let me blow this up a little bit more.
It's better.
So when we stake it out, we stake out what you can build within, so the approved building envelopes, right here. This setback here is twenty-seven feet. The setback on the rest of the site everywhere else was thirty, throughout Phase one through Phase four. I don't know why, but I'm just being completely transparent. This somehow back in nineteen ninety eight was established as twenty-seven feet. So when we did the stakeout, we staked out these four corners of the building envelope because that was the approved building envelope. Now, if you go back to the as, well, we don't have to show the building envelope on the as-built, but what was built, everything fell within this envelope that was built for the property. Theoretically, this envelope should have been another three feet in, and that's the variance that we're seeking. We're seeking a two-point-seven foot of variance for the property. Does that answer your question?
Okay, and also on the as-built that Andy sent me, it shows that the elevation is the same as my property, but it's been raised a good six-plus feet?
So I'm not sure which as-built Andy shared with you, because we've-
Let me interject here for just a minute. Again, we're talking about the setbacks tonight, because that's really all the CBA is able to talk about. There is another meeting, as Chris mentioned, that town staff, the engineering department is having with Chris Lapine and Frank Riddle, to further that, the conversation that we've been having trying to, you know, to get the information that you've asked for, and figure out what, if anything, can be done or should be done. That, we're not going to be able to resolve tonight. But we are working with you on that.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And that particular spot just ties in with the setback, like the setback wouldn't be an issue if the elevation hadn't been raised so high, because just as we said in two thousand eighteen, the privacy fence, you know, that's fine.
You mentioned earlier a row of trees, you mentioned earlier a row of trees that's supposed to go along that property line?
Well, that's-
The whole property line around my house, they're supposed to be putting trees, a whole tree line in. And, you know, that's one reason I kept talking to Otto about it, because the project kept stopping.
Right.
And every time I talked to him, he said, well, the machines are sinking into the ground. He's like, you know, the houses are sinking, which is why they had to eventually, I'm assuming, keep raising the elevation. And I immediately, you know, reached out about that, because I'm like, well, how's this going to affect me? But at any rate, it's just the multiple issues. Like, would I be more lenient about this, like, almost three feet? Yeah, I guess, but it's the privacy issue that really, I bought the house for the privacy, so now it's just encroaching on my property.
Chris, when will the trees be planted there?
That'd be a question that maybe Frank can answer, as the project manager.
I don't know if you know the answer to that now or not, but, okay. Well, we'll follow up on that, but I, but it seems to me that that's part of the setback issue and the privacy issue would be related to the trees.
Well, yeah, because then it's taking, it's encroaching three feet, so I have a privacy fence, so when they're putting their tree line, is that going to, how's that going to affect my property as well?
Is there enough room?
Any sort of vegetation that's planted would be planted on the lot two sixty-nine?
Right.
Okay.
Would be planted on the adjoining property.
So it wouldn't encroach any further on their property, it would be on this property, and it would be, it would go along that edge, basically.
Yeah, and I think, I think if I recall, there's a six-foot fence, and we're about a hun, the actual dwelling itself is about a hundred and twenty-seven feet from the existing dwelling.
Yes, that doesn't sound that far. I mean, it's, that house is like right up against my fence. It feels, it's just a little strange, but at any rate, I just wanted to-
Well, then, Mr. Leahy, you had asked before, what would it take to make this? I would like, I haven't seen what type of trees or anything they're putting there, but I would like to request that the board maybe condition that maybe whatever they were going to put there, maybe a little more is necessary for just behind, you know, the house there, because it's just like, now it's right here. And it wouldn't have been. We would have brought this up a long time ago, except for the fact that we didn't know it was being raised.
And if, and like I said, if the house wasn't like, it's literally above my fence.
And it's right there. It's not a hundred feet.
They can just see over it. So it's just, to me, I would like privacy trees. It would make me feel a lot better about it.
I just want to, I want to just make it clear for everybody, we didn't intentionally do that. That was a requirement to raise the dwelling above the flood plain. I just want to make it clear that this was not something that we decided we were going to place it three feet of your house. As you alluded, it would be within a flood plain, but in order for any new construction, it has to be elevated above the flood plain.
Well, then we would just ask, yes, we understand that, we would just ask that if it creates an issue, that it be taken care of, because this is just not drying out regardless of weather. It's got nothing to do with weather. It's muck. You know, you'll sink in eight or ten inches. It's definitely coming off there. So-
All right, so again, I just want to focus on the variance that's in front of us. Is there, if we condition the variance and granting the variance on you planting some evergreen screening there, is that a big, is that something that could be done?
Yeah, something that last year, year round would be ideal, and just, the privacy is my biggest issue. Obviously, the elevation is a whole nother concern, just, not just with the privacy, but obviously the flooding. But that's obviously something that we're all about, something else.
So for the applicant, is that something that can be done pretty quickly?
Yeah.
Within the next planting, you know, in the fall planting?
Yes. And obviously, they would focus on something that's deer resistant.
Yeah, like a nice arborvitae, a western arborvitae would be very nice.
We didn't hear what Chris said.
What did you say?
Something that would focus on being deer resistant.
Deer resistant.
Deer resistant, yeah, that would be good.
In year-round color.
In year-round, evergreen, right, evergreen, okay.
Because most of the tree lines there forever else, it's just that one house, it's no trees.
Well, just for the record, what I'm showing right here, in these images, there are five Norway spruce that are to be planted between the two properties.
Really? There's enough room for Norway spruce?
Are they a reasonable size?
Oh, they get big.
No, I mean, to start with, like, are they, you know, going to be, I get those all the time.
What are, what are the, do you have a plant specification?
We're going to look at those.
Yeah, like I said, the house is there, we know that. You can't move a house, and we get that, but we would like to work on what we can make better.
Just for the record, I just want to share, and then to the rest of that, which doesn't necessarily butt your property, but we have some red maples to the west and some red maples to the east.
All right, but the spruces are the ones along the side of the house, right? That's-
Right, we have a combination of spruces over there. Right now, the spruces that were originally rooted were five to six feet. So they're fact-growing trees. I mean, I would say if they put in some eight footers, I think we would, in the manner which they grow, I think which are pretty rapid, I think we would address some of their concerns with this encroachment, is simply just increasing those in height by two feet. And if your heart desires, we can even further, well, if you want, we can remove the red maples here and place those with spruces grown, so that you have complete screening right here along your rear property line.
Okay.
Yeah, no leaves.
No leaves, yeah. All right. All right. Did anybody else want to comment? Or is that pretty much covered? Okay, come on up.
Hi, so I believe-
Excuse me, what's your name?
Francesca LaSalle.
Francesca, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
So I'm not sure which home it is, because I haven't gone into the, you know, Gables, the number, the resident number that they've listed at twenty-seven point three, oh, lot two six nine. But I am only guessing that it, I can only guess it's the one with the trees that are cut down, any, there's no anything in front of it covering it. It's kind of to the left. You know, I have to say, it's almost like it was done intentionally. We live, I live directly across the road. I bought this property, my home, at two six two Salt Point, you know, because it's like, it's neat in the way that I am two minutes from the town, the city of Poughkeepsie limits by car, and yet you're out in the country in the suburbs. So they've totally taken that away, bringing in mobile, I mean, they're supposed to be modulators, but they look like mobiles. I saw them come in, and they look like mobile homes. I mean, I guess some modulators are two mobile homes put together or double wides, but they were sitting there, they put extra roofing on them, made it higher. I'm like, they worked on that one mobile home, I watched them over and over again. Extra roofing and cutting down in front of it. I'm like, it's like they want it to stick out. You drive down the road, and it's like overwhelming. I couldn't believe it was planned like that. This gentleman keeps referring that they got the variant, or the plans in ninety-eight. Well, I'm sorry, but it sounds like they've used outdated planning. I mean, and the homes were already across the road. My home was there. Those homes were built in sixty. They're not showing any regard for the neighbors, you know, for their community, the people that live across the road that bought kind of like a country living. Somebody said to me today, well, maybe they should put up white fencing. I said, no, they really shouldn't, because that would take away from the country feel. You know, the nice, I don't know if they're PVC fencing. I said, that would be tacky. They just need to put more, you know, like trees. And he's talking about eight-foot trees. I'm a homeowner who's got such a limited income, and I put in thirteen-foot trees on my property for privacy, just like this homeowner has talked about the privacy. Our privacy has been taken away. They want to start out with eight-foot trees when they've impeded on, you know, the people across the road. It's overwhelming. You drive down the road, and these mobile homes, that's what they look like, mobile homes are sticking out.
Again, I want to remind you that we're talking about a variance.
Okay, it is a variance. I'm talking about the variance, because it's almost at the road. It's like, it comes upon you, as you're driving down the road, you see, I believe it's the one that's sticking out, they cut, and there's nothing covering it. Last year, they had Central Hudson Contractors cut down vegetation that they didn't even have to cut down by many, many, many feet by the pole. Again, that looked intentional. Then they also litter. Their guys are out there cleaning up, and they're not cleaning up their litter. I had to look at a white sheet type thing, I don't know what it was, something plastic in the winter that stood there for months, and finally, one winter day, it flew around. It actually flew on my property across the way, two six two, onto my neighbors. I had mentioned that to Kristi when she came to my house to look at my fencing permit and, you know, business, and then it flew off. But the variance, this is why I took the time to come here. It is, it's encroaching, it's taking away from the beauty of the landscape of the country look, the country feel, and they could be at least covering it for the people across the way. My home, interestingly enough, has-
The three-foot variance, so we're going to be looking at whether the difference between three feet changes anything? That's really what we're going to be looking at?
Yes, I think it does. If it's the home that I'm thinking of, which sticks out like a sore thumb, because it's right there, it's right upon you, and at least they could cover. And like I said, they went and put extra roofing on it. One day, they banged it out. I was impressed, you know, it was a winter day, and it seems like they did two roofs. And then I'm thinking, and it's empty. Like, it's empty, they brought it in about February, then they put the new roof. I don't know how people would want to buy something like that, and they look in their backyard, and there's a hill. I mean, I'm sure they're going to sell, but they're not even, you know, they're not even really filling those or, you know, occupying them yet.
So if you could stay on the-
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's, I just feel that it's too close to the road, and that two-point, twenty-seven point three, you know, does make a difference.
All right.
And it would be nice for them to fill it at least with trees, covering it, and like higher than eight feet. They, Adams and everyone around has things that are available that are higher, much higher, like thirteen feet to start with, and that would be nice. It would, it just show, it just seems like they're not really caring about the neighbors. And I've got the worst, interestingly enough, view of all that new phase. I mean, it's almost like just right in my face, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I just make comment, I just want to clarify one thing for the record. I just- I, I just want to check, when considering this existing lot in front of us, we asked the individual who just spoke, and then with the setback that we're requesting, we're approximately 400 feet off the roadway.
Okay.
And, and not 27 feet off the roadway, I'm not sure if the individual or the vehicle was referring to the same lot, and I do want to point out that there is existing vegetation along Salt Point Turnpike, which was installed at the beginning of the overall project, and I can, if you allow me, just to share with you, some of this vegetation here, the evergreens, there's a large berm up here, whoever drives by Salt Point Turnpike, some of the first phases of construction involved the installation of a drainage line and vegetation in this particular area, so that it would provide some of the screening, so some of those evergreens that are there, and Frank, tell me if I'm wrong, but some of them are.
Frank ran away.
Oh, he ran away.
Yeah, he's gone away.
Nevertheless, but the vegetation on this lower, the western portion, this has not been installed yet, I will acknowledge that, these lots haven't been finally graded yet, and we still have a sediment trap that sits over here, which prohibits this vegetation in this particular area from being installed at this time, but they, they did make an effort to screen their construction by installing what they could back in the early 2000s on this property, and I just want to make everybody aware, and I do want to make them aware once again, that the variance in question is 400 feet off of Salt Point Turnpike, not three feet.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else? Come on.
I just wanted to confirm that.
Excuse me, one second, what's your name?
James Mailey.
James, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I just wanted to know what time they're doing all these things, next week? You said it was gonna be next week or next month?
There's a meeting next week with the engineering department and with the applicant in this case, yeah, I don't remember what day it is, but it's next week, yeah. No, our engineer's been in touch with, with, I believe, your daughter, right? And, and we will have a follow-up discussion with you, but no, we're, we're, the town is meeting with the applicant to go over those things, yeah.
So where do we say our concerns with the elevations, engineering, all that stuff?
We have, we have, we have them, we've, we met with you a month ago, I think, or so, right, so we were aware of them, and we were gonna follow up with you as well, as soon as we've had our follow-up meeting with the, with the applicant. And Andy Lern, I believe, has been in touch with, with you to let you know the schedule and where we're going, right? Isn't that correct? I've seen the emails.
He has been responding to us, but we, we just learned about this meeting, what was it?
Thursday.
Thursday, we'd never received anything.
Yeah, I just learned about it then too, it was just scheduled. We, we had, at, at, the last time we met, we had said there were certain things that they needed to get done, and that we were going to, you know, get into the, about the middle of July, so they had time to do those things, and that we would meet again, and then that meeting got scheduled at either the end of last week, or, yeah, so it's, it's not, no one's keeping anything from you, we're just setting it up.
It was scheduled today, I was, and just returned to the office in a second, so.
We're just, we're just concerned about our property and the damage that's being done, so we're trying to, trying to quicken this process to, to, like, I like mowing my lawn.
Yeah, yeah.
It's flooded all the time.
I, I do understand, we are, the town is, is taking your concerns seriously, we are trying to follow up and do what, you know, what can and, and be done to figure out what the source of the issues are, and fix those things that can be fixed. Okay?
All right, anyone else from the audience? And if you could stop sharing your screen?
Thank you.
Anyone from Zoom that wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
That brings us to item number nine, storage cap, Six Violet Avenue, is someone here for that application?
Good evening, this is Mike O'Gee from Casa Engineering, also with me is Sabrina Prinalet from Storage Space, if I'm able to share my screen, I can pull up.
Okay, excuse me, let me just swear you in, Mike, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do, sorry for jumping down.
They're used to the planning board, we don't visit the planning board, so, yeah, it's a little different.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, so I was in front of this board, I believe that was back in May, requesting a couple setback variances and a parking variance, which was granted by this board. Since then, we went back to the planning board, and they reviewed the architectural renderings and elevations, based on conversations with the planning board, they were looking for more, I guess, I'm an architect, so I guess the one is texture to the building, our, our project architects worked on that, specifically what the board was asking for was maybe sloping lines, and that's what she did incorporate. By doing this, though, it pushed the average building height over the permitted of 40 feet to 40.86 feet. The maximum height at the top of these sloped roofs is 43 foot 10 and 3/4, but per our discussion with town staff, I think it was determined that for, for sloped roofs, it was the median height which warranted the, the max. So with that, the planning board asked us if we would go back to the zoning board to obtain this variance, we agreed to do so, as of, I believe, last month, in, in June, we did get final site plan approval, special use permit, and architectural approval from the planning board, so the last remaining item is to come back to this board and hopefully obtain our variance for 0.86 feet to allow us to move forward with this project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board or the public may have.
So I have a question.
Okay.
I'm confused.
Yes.
It says that they're looking for addition.
Yeah, the, the agenda's wrong, I don't know why.
Okay, just, that was just me.
Either Chrissy or Lisa, they're looking for the average height, which I understand, because they're just sort of little parapets, is that a, is that a criteria we can use, rather than the actual top?
Yeah, that's actually how the building height is defined.
Yeah, as the average.
So they need a variance from the average.
Right, and I pulled that up as well, from the town code, if it's a flat roof, it is the height, but if it's a median height between eaves for ridge and gable, so that, based on discussion with town staff, that's how we move forward with that.
All right, then I have any questions? Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
And no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
All right, and if you would stop scaring, sharing your screen, scaring me?
I'll stop scaring.
Eddie?
I just want to note too, that I, I, you know, I think they might have to come back for signage too, but I haven't received a signed package yet.
Yeah, I believe Storage Space is working out the details on their signed package, and will be submitting a separate application.
Okay.
All right, anyone, anyone want to comment on this application? Anyone from Zoom? All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number 10. Is there someone here for that applicant? Foam and wash?
That's just an extension request, they don't seem to be present for that.
All right.
We have the documentation in the file that asks for it, and there's no new information about the application.
It's not a public hearing.
No.
Oh, okay, all right, then, did I move for a 10-minute break? Five? Seven and a half minutes. All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. All right, we're back in session. And because you guys are in attendance, we'll, we'll do item six first.
But they said they were having a good time, I asked.
I told them, you know, they should watch the whole thing. All right, Christine?
Okay, so let's see here. Item number six, 16 Meadow Road, requesting a special use permit for an accessory apartment and a variance to construct a pergola six feet from the side lot line, requiring a four-foot variance, and also 35 percent, okay, the apartment is currently 592 square feet and 542 square feet would be 35 percent of the total square footage of the home, which is 1548, so.
So we'll need a variance from the board for the 50 square feet to allow them to be over the 35 percent by 50 square feet, so.
Okay, so.
Uh, yes, yeah, so there's a.
Yeah, I have everything here, so. Okay, so the, let's see, just one second. Okay, so based on the short EAF, I asked the board to adopt a resolution of non-significance in the matter of 16 Meadow Road, and that the board act as lead agency, so. All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Accusals? Okay, so next, we're gonna do, I guess I should first ask, is, does any, is there any further discussion between us and the board about this? So, all right, so, will we do the pergola?
Sure.
All right, so. Okay, so I move as findings from the staff report for the special use and the area variance for the pergola, and also for the, the 50-foot, the variance of 50 square feet for the.
The floor area variance, yeah.
Floor area variance. Okay, do, is that?
So Christine's moving that, the board adopt the findings of the staff report related to those three items.
So. Okay, all those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Accusals? Okay, so that motion carries. Now, that's everything for.
So you need to do the variance, that's, that was for accepting the findings.
Okay.
So now you need the standard motion for the variance for these two items.
Okay.
And you can do them together.
Okay. So you want me to go ahead and make the motion then?
Sure.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance and a special use permit set forth in item number six.
So two area variances, one for the pergola and one for the floor area, as well as the special use permit.
Thank you, as well as a special use permit, okay. So this is. So this decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during public hearings, site visits by board members, and the staff report, and that the special use permit meets the criteria set forth in the town code. So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Accusals? So that motion carries.
Congratulations, guys.
You're not really gonna leave, are you?
Okay, thank you.
If you do item number seven, which I recuse.
Now we're gonna do item number seven.
Sorry, our staff report.
That's okay, that's okay, thank you. Okay, so item number seven, Matthew Costa, one-ten Over Rocka Road, seeking a variance to install a pool in the front yard, which is on a corner lot. Is made further discussion? Okay, so I move as findings the following. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. This property is shielded by thick vegetation, and similar pools exist in the neighborhood, and it will not have any effect on the character of the neighborhood. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The applicant is on a corner, is on a corner, and therefore has two front yards. Based on topography of the remaining yard and the proximity to existing power, no other way to obtain the desired result without an area variance. Number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Yes, in the sense that pools are not allowed in the front yard, but the impact is minimal based on the dense vegetation and the ground level change shielding the pool from sight. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in that neighborhood or district. There's no evidence that the pool will have any physical or environmental impact. And number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision by the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. Yes, but there's no reason to deny it based on that. So those are the findings, and. All right, would you like to make the motion?
Not really. We're only seven.
Number seven.
We're just doing a variance request, right?
Right.
I move that the board approve the request set forth in, for an area variance, set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings and public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. Approving this variance, the board adopts this finding that was set forth by the chair. Good.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Accusals? That motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
They're leaving.
Very kind of you to say that.
All right, that brings us back to item number one. Horizon, ten-fifty Winslow Gate Road. I would remind the board members that this is a use variance of a public utility, and that the criterion is different than other use variances. I think that all the evidence has shown that we meet the public necessity test, but does anybody have any concerns?
No.
No.
Okay. I would also suggest that we add as a condition that any of the architectural design concerns be dealt with by the planning board. So anything that Mr. Musso was concerned about, about the fencing, that that would just be determined by the planning board in their site review. Anyone have any objections to that? Then, whereas after due deliberation, including careful consideration of the standard review for a use variance for a public utility, the ZBA has determined that the criterion for issuance of a use variance has been met, specifically finding that the applicant has sufficiently established that there are gaps in the wireless service, that the location of proposed facility would remedy those gaps, and that the proposed facility presents a minimal intrusion on the community, and therefore if we resolve that, we grant that variance requested by, of Horizon. With the condition that any architectural issues be dealt with by the planning board.
So, Mr. Chairman, one question.
I'm sorry.
So there's more concerns that if, in the near future, in the future period, if Horizon comes back and says, well, they have to jack the signal strength up, they have to come back before.
Under our current code, I don't think they have to come back.
No, we could make that, Mike Musso's report actually suggests, I think, that that be a condition, that, you know, that you say that any changes would have to come.
Output wise.
I think we could do that in the meantime, until we have the new law in place. When we have the new law in place, it would be.
I did have a discussion with the applicant's attorney earlier today, who questioned whether the town, in the absence of a code provision allowing that to happen, did that. Given that the town is actively working on their code, I would think that the new code would be in place prior to any, you know, changes being made to the structure. Obviously, if they were coming back, I also had a discussion with Mr. Musso earlier today about this topic, and he said that the signal strength of the antenna or the cantenna that's being put on is limited in signal strength, and would not be able to handle the, what he calls, the high-frequency 5G that seems to be what many people are concerned of. And so it's pretty clear, I think, that if Horizon were changing the tower or changing the cantenna, they would have to come back and get additional town approvals. But I'm not clear whether if they were just changing the frequency within what that cantenna is able to do now, that would require them, under our current code, to come back, so. But I think they would be required to come back to make any, you know, substantial changes. So, based on that, I don't, you know.
I can live with that.
Could we specify what the frequencies are, when you talk about conditions or anything like that? They've given us the frequencies, right, Horizon has?
Yes. Well, we could, I mean, I think we're getting ourselves caught up, and I'm sorry for, but, you know, if they make any physical changes to the, to the.
Right, if they were to change the structure or the cantenna, they would need to come back.
All right, with that additional condition, so moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that passes seven-zero. Number two was adjourned. Number three, Thirty Nassau Road. This is, well, this is another accessory apartment. A special use permit. Anyone have any concerns about this one? It seems to fit all the criteria. In that case, I move that the ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action, appropriate for uncoordinated review, and declare itself to be lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, for reasons set forth, the determination of nonsignificance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Phyllis, am I making this motion?
Not at all. I move that the board of, that the board approve the request for an area varian, no.
Special use permit.
Sorry.
That's all right.
For a special use permit, set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members in the staff report. In approving this request for a special use variant, the board adopts the findings and the determinations found in the items of the staff report, or as made by the chair.
Second, as a staff. With the staff report.
Staff report.
Still second.
All right, all those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, that brings us to item number four, Twenty-nine Wiltsey Road. There's a special use permit for some agricultural district, as well as area variances. Does anyone have any concerns about this?
I don't know.
Okay. So I think I have to do some. This has been in existence, the agricultural portion of the property's been in existence for quite some time. So I don't think there'll be any detrimental effect by the establishment of such use on other uses within the district. And that it'll be in harmony with the orderly development of the district, and that a location measuring height will not discourage the appropriate development of adjacent lands. It appears that all structures are accessible for fire and police protection. And it otherwise meets all the criteria for a special use permit. Regarding the area variances, the lot is four point five two acres, after the subdivision requiring a point four eight of an acre, I think that's pretty de minimis. And again, I pointed out, it's not gonna have any impact on the nature of the property or the neighborhood, and it's certainly self-created, but that's not a reason to deny it. And the barn, after the change, is now five feet within the property line, but that property line really is owned by the town of Poughkeepsie, and has no real effect, so I move that we waive that requirement for the special use permit. Can I do that? Okay. Any discussion on that? All right. All right, what else do I have to do?
That's an unlisted action.
All right, so, then.
Well, actually, this, I mean, it was before the planning board, isn't there a NIGDAC in place? And that's how they were allowed to come here?
Right.
Yeah, that's.
I.
Sorry, yes, that's.
I mean, they did receive their conditional approvals, but there still was a NIGDAC done by the planning board, and I think the ZBA can simply adopt that NIGDAC.
Then, in that case. I move to approve the area variances set forth in item number, what was it, four? Decisions based upon the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, applicant's representative, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the findings that I offered. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
And then based upon that I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number four, it's, this decision is based upon the review of the application, testimony of the applicant's representative, testimony gathered during the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and those findings that I offered before. So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number five, Fifteen West Cedar Street. This is an area variance for a side yard setback, six feet on one side and one foot on the other. This is an addition that encroaches into the backyard onto the parking lot. It's, it's consistent with other properties in the neighborhood. I think it's gonna be subject to, certainly, the building code about what happens with the addition, and I think that you're gonna review about the effect that it has on the.
Yeah, I looked quick, I don't think it's a requirement for closets, not to be in the bedroom, but I'm gonna confirm with Tim, and, you know, it'll go to the building department after this, and they'll review it for code compliant.
And also, you're gonna check on the driveway issue?
Yes, and I'll check on the driveway issue.
Okay. With those, with those concerns, anyone have any other, other concerns? No? Then Tony, do I make in that motion?
Sure. Special use, right?
No, that's just area variance.
I move the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony from the applicant's representative, testimony offered in public hearing, and the results of site visit by board members. In approving this area variance, in approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair.
Oh, actually. Were there some findings? Did I remind you? Okay, there's no staff report, then. Let me offer these. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the variance, the variance itself is consistent with the neighborhood and nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, any addition to the property would require an area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically, actually, it's kind of de minimis on one side and not much on the other, it is a very narrow lot, and any addition would require a variance. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the impact of physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, the variance itself would not, there's no evidence that that would have any impact on the physical or environmental conditions, and while this was self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Now, now, if you wanna go ahead.
Now.
Sorry.
Déjà vu. I move that the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony from the applicant's representative, testimony offered in public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm a no.
Okay, so that passes six-zero.
Do you need a reason?
No. You're grumpy, we know.
It passes six-one.
I'm sorry?
You just said six-zero, it passes.
Six-one, yeah. Sorry. Six and seven we did, that brings us to number eight. Two-thirty-seven, three-eighty-one, Salt Point Turnpike. This is an area variance of, what did I say it was? Two point seven feet. However, based upon the discussions that we had with the applicant and the neighbors, I think that if we're gonna grant this, we should condition it on the planting of mature evergreens along that fence.
What's mature?
I'm sorry?
Mature what?
Mature?
I need a number.
Eight feet or higher?
Well.
They were proposed.
I want them to act in a, you know.
Minimum eight feet?
Yeah, I mean, that's, in order to be enforceable, we need something. The applicant did offer, I believe, eight feet.
Yeah, I think either.
They're proposed, they were proposed five to six feet of planting, and at least the applicant's consultant offered eight to ten feet of planting.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a six-foot fence there anyway. They, the applicant, or the neighbor states that there's, the house is two feet over that, so a minimum of eight, but I think ten would be nicer.
Okay.
And that the screening be on that property.
Well, yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, not in between.
Actually, I was gonna discuss whether they would accept it on their property, but everybody said they'd put it on their other property, so.
I think their fence is on the property line. And the other question that the board should discuss.
And the other question that the board should discuss, there was an offer from the applicant to do more than the five Norway spruces to replace the red maples. The five Norway spruces are what, def, are house to house, um, but I don't know if the board wants to extend.
If we, yeah, we, there's an, a landscape plan, an approved landscape plan. If we modify that to replace any deciduous trees with conifers?
They said they would.
Right, we could do that, yeah.
You, well, you don't mean any, you mean adjoining this lot and the neighbor's lot.
Yeah, just on this lot.
Yeah, just.
Lot two sixty-nine, because the landscaping plan covers the entire parcel.
Yeah, we could do that. It's like a field change. It would be a field change if it was kind of prompted by this variance, and, yeah, we could do that.
This would have to be before CO, right, Mike?
What's that?
These would have to be planted before the CO?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Question. Actually, I'd like to, when do you expect the CO, I mean?
Well, they're, they're probably looking to get a CO pretty soon, right?
Yep.
I don't think you can successfully plant them until...
Until fall?
Yeah.
They can always get a temporary CO. Yeah, they'd have to get a temp CO.
They don't usually like temp COs on, uh, the banks don't usually like temp COs. That's why we, we run into this problem. We'd have to maybe do a, we, we could do a small bond like we do for lawns.
Right, but that's not something this board needs to be, I mean, I know the board wants the plantings to be done soon to alleviate some of the concerns for the neighbors.
But I also want it to be successful.
Right, you also want them to live, so.
All right, so they'll be done in the fall, and we'd have to do a bond, just to, yeah, okay, we could do that.
But based, based on the, the wording, we expect, we want them to live, do we have to word it that they have to maintain those trees if they die off?
What's the relationship? Do these homeowners of the, of these, are they, is it like a regular mobile home, where they just own the house and not the land?
Yeah.
That's how it is?
I think so.
Okay, so then the, so the...
The property would still be...
Responsible, okay, to plant and maintain.
Right. I mean, just in case, because we know that they could die off.
In perpetuity.
Or a longer.
Or longer.
Might be shorter, but, but, you know. Okay.
Thank you.
You got all right? Tony?
Do we pay attention?
Pay attention?
Yeah. You're up. Am I making this motion?
No, I guess I could refer this, okay. So, this is item number, uh, item number eight we're talking about, right?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, let me see. Here we are. Did we have a staff report on this, or just, uh, or just all findings here?
Let me make these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. The granting of the variance will have no impact in changing the character or nature of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, other than moving the property or the property line, no.
No, Mike, they're saying they can't hear. Somebody just typed in, said they can't hear anything.
Oh, Sabrina, you raised your hand?
I gave them time out.
Is there anything in the chat?
Somebody just put something in the chat.
Oh, there is something in the chat, okay, let me see, hold on. We can't hear anything, I can't hear anything. Oh, all right, so, you can't hear, I, um, stay there.
I was on, I was on a roll, too.
You were on a roll, I'm sorry. It'll be...
You have to start from the beginning.
Right back. This is crazy, all right.
Larry, can you hear us?
No, Larry can't either, he actually typed into here. Yeah, all right, so, and... I'm going to make Larry the, I'm going to make Larry the host. All right, all right, I'm going to join again. It's funny, it's like the thing gets tired or something, I don't know.
Did you pay the bill?
Yeah, actually, the controller.
When this happens, the cable stream...
Recording in progress.
...still stays current, right?
Yes, yeah. Nothing, yeah, so, are, are we back? Do you hear us now, Larry? All right, uh, hold on. Okay, now I can put Larry on, whatever this is, on mute. Yes, all right. So, Larry, you hear us okay now? Others?
Except that meeting room is still showing the badge. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So...
So they don't see us?
Right.
That's weird.
He's had enough.
Larry's had enough, he's done, I have enough, I mean...
Does it say muted?
There we go.
There we go.
All right, fix that, okay. Sabrina, do you hear us now?
It says we're muted.
Oh, wait. Now it says we're muted, okay, right, 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 okay. Why on earth are we muted? How do I unmute myself? That's weird. All right, hold on. There we go. All right, Sabrina, do you hear us now?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, Larry, you can come back. All right, sorry about that, folks.
We can hear now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and this is regarding item number eight. I would offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. The, this variance will not have any impact on the character of the neighborhood, this is a multi-unit development. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, the home is already built, so there's no reasonable, um, method other than the area variance to correct it. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, um, it's in, it's less than ten percent, and so mathematically not so. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, this particular variance, there's no evidence that it will have any, um, adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and while this is clearly self-created, that's not a reason to deny the violation, and I would offer those findings.
So, back to the motion.
Yeah, back to the motion.
All right, so, uh, I move that, to approve the area variance request for item number eight, uh, and the decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visit by board members, uh, and in approving this variance, uh, it shall be subject to the condition of the applicant providing...
They're going to modify the landscape design plan for that lot to replace, uh...
Maples with, or which spruce?
Deciduous trees with conifers, and to maintain, set.
Okay.
And you wanted to do it, do you want to time it, or are you going to take it?
We're going to plant them this fall, and it's going to be a minimum of eight feet.
Okay, right, so, so, subject to the condition that the, uh, the applicant agrees to modify the...
Now, you don't have to repeat everything I said.
What's it?
You don't have to repeat.
Okay, we got it?
Got it.
All right. If you do, that's great.
Any discussion?
No. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to this one? Okay, that motion carries. Uh, that brings us to item number nine. There is a staff report on this one. Um, any, any concerns about, about this one? This is... Anyone have any concerns about this one? Then Larry, do you mind making this motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variant set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings, the determination is found in item one through five of the staff report.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Mr. Chair, before we go on to number ten...
Yes.
Did we do SEAKER on the first item number one on the cell tower? Did we go straight to the...
We went right to the heart of the matter.
So...
Oops. I'll forget.
In that case, um, do I have a...
There may be a paragraph in that draft resolution, um, that I gave you before that might be applicable to read out, or otherwise.
All right, and, and item number one?
So, what we should do, just to be clear, is we adopt SEAKER and then re-adopt the resolution so that it's clear that the SEAKER was done prior to the resolution being re-adopted.
Okay, but do you have the, do you have form, or I'll just sign it tomorrow?
No, I'll sign that.
All right, regarding item number one, whereas, uh, the ZBA, actually, I, I move that we, the ZBA declare itself as lead agency in this matter.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 That motion carries. And, um, I move that the proposed action would not have a significant adverse environmental impact for the reasons set forth in the determination of non-significance, and adopt the same.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in, that's, pay were signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And then we've got to read you the motion for the...
It can be as simple as I move that the ZBA re-adopt the motion previously made for this agenda item.
Uh, I move that the ZBA re-adopt our findings regarding item number one, approving the area variance.
Second.
Use variance, sorry.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
With the conditions.
With the, with the conditions set forth. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now, item number ten, this is just a request to extend, uh, previously granted variances. Uh, anybody have any concerns about this?
No.
All right, Christine, do you mind making a motion?
Sure. Read the whole thing through as the...
I think you would just grant the request for an extension.
Okay.
In fact, I, I think that you would just, I, in fact, how about this? I move to grant the applicant's request for an extension as described in item number ten.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to item number eleven. Uh, the planning board has requested that their lead agency on the storage depot expansion at thirty-five page Park Drive, they, they want to expand an existing...
Yeah, they're adding, um, some outdoor cell storage behind the building further back away from the juster.
Okay. Anyone have any concerns about that? Then I move that we accept, I move that we accept the planning board's request that they are lead agency on this application.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. And, um, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, thanks, everybody. Good night, Larry.
Good night, Larry.